We're about to open the public hearing. If anybody still has a green card that they want to turn in for the public hearing, could you do it now because we're going to spin them so that they'll be in random order. So, last call for green cards. Okay, board, if we can have a motion to open the public hearing to approve or deny the request to change the name of Jefferson Elementary to Sequoia Elementary School.
I'll move opening the public hearing.
Moved by Solowski, second by?
Second.
Second by Duran. We will now take a vote. The vote is just to open a public hearing. So, all those in favor of opening the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose abstentions, motion passes. We now officially open the public hearing. I have a stack of cards that were rolled and what we're going to do since we have almost an hour is just take cards till we run out of time and I'm going to take them in the order that they were handed to me. I'm not going to reshuffle them or try to sort them in any way. Each speaker has three minutes. You are welcome to give your time to somebody else, but then they only have three minutes and you have to be here in order to give your time to somebody else. After we close the public hearing, we're then going to take a short recess, then we start our regular board meeting. We have some administrative items in the beginning of the board meeting and then later in the board meeting, there is an actual action item on the Jefferson School name change. So, that's the process for tonight. We will be taking public comment cards for the regular board meeting, but if you wanted to speak there, you would have to submit another card. I hope that all makes sense. The first speaker is Barry Chrisburg. And everybody can keep to the three minutes so we can get as many of you as possible. That would be great.
Who's monitoring the three minutes?
Uh-oh.
Maybe we can start or we can just keep.
Hi, I'm Barry Chrisburg. Both of my sons attended the Jefferson School and had a wonderful education experience there, but were I a parent in Jefferson today, I would be supporting the name change and I want to briefly outline three reasons. Number one, I remember when I was studying back on the East Coast at a fancy Ivy League school, we learned that Earl Warren was a great legal hero. After all, he wrote Brown versus Board of Education. He was a champion of progressive criminal justice policy. When I came out to California, I found out what they didn't tell me, which is Earl Warren ordered the placement of 100,000 Japanese Americans into concentration camps. And we learned subsequently in the Kura-Matsu case that he used phony information to justify this internment. So, history, our view of historical figures changes and that Earl Warren was an enlightened figure in some areas does not take away the stain of his role in sending 100,000 Japanese Americans to concentration camps and I certainly wouldn't ask a Japanese-American child to want to attend Earl Warren School. Secondly, I just want to state that we cannot underestimate the significance of American slavery. It is not a trivial matter. It's not a matter that goes away. Nazism lasted for barely two decades. The equivalent American Holocaust lasted over 300 years and was as savage and as brutal and still weighs heavy in the hearts and minds of people whose families experienced And white people shouldn't trivialize this. And finally, I want to note that this was a week in which finally justice was brought to Mississippi, when one of the murderers of civil rights workers finally, after 45 years, was convicted of manslaughter. And one African-American woman on the radio today talked about how the killing of those civil rights workers was her nightmare as a small child and her friend's nightmare and that finally the nightmare was over. So, one can, I guess, construct a lot of arguments about good things that Thomas Jefferson did and certainly he did some, but in the end, he participated in unquestionably the worst thing that has ever transpired in American history and I don't think children ought to be required to pay homage to that. Thank you very much.
Essie Robinson Abrams, followed by Michael Larick.
Hi, my name is Essie and I'm a student at Jefferson/Sequoia Elementary. When it was first announced that the school's name was probably going to change, I was very excited. Since it is my first time voting on something really important, you can probably imagine how I felt. My first choice was Sequoia. When it won, I could have jumped up and down, but I still felt sorry for the people who wished it still was Jefferson and I hoped it didn't affect their lives too much. But then I heard that the school board had to vote on it too for it to be legal and that ruined my excitement. I felt that maybe it wouldn't win and that's why I got disappointed. It will feel awful if you decide against the name Sequoia, so I hope you decide to change the name to Sequoia.
Thank you.
As an African-American, knowing that my ancestors were slaves, I feel that Jefferson shouldn't be the name because he owned slaves. I also feel that Sequoia is a name that many of the students like.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
My name is Michael Larick. I live in Berkeley and I'd like to start out just by a quote from President John F. Kennedy on the occasion of his hosting an official dinner honoring Nobel Prize winners at the White House. And at the time Kennedy said that the White House had not seen such a gathering of talent since Thomas Jefferson had dined there alone. Slavery, yes, horrible thing, we all know that. It has been the accepted human condition from day one. There is slavery all over the world today as we know. The Sudan outlawed slavery in the year 2003. Niger outlawed it 12 years ago. Two Boston Globe, Boston Sun, excuse me, reporters a couple of years ago went to Africa and purchased black slaves. Slavery continues to this day. It has been outlawed in Western civilization for many, many years. Now, this is, those little children here that got to vote, I'm sure didn't have much information on what they were voting on, unfortunately. I'm sure they didn't know that the first black, excuse me, the first slave owner in the United States was a black man named Anthony Johnson. He owned a slave named John Custer. Black owned slaves at a remarkable rate. In 1830, there were more than 10,000 slaves owned by blacks in Maryland, South Carolina, Virginia, and Louisiana. In Charleston, South Carolina, in 1840, there were 402 owners, 2,001 slaves. There were times in Charleston where 75% of the freed blacks in that city were documented slave owners. This is not something that is particular to the white man. I'm guessing that these young children learned the white man owned slaves. Blacks sold their own people into slavery from Central Africa to the coast. It's a horrible thing, but we must look at reality here when we're dealing with revisionist history. We can't just change everything to fit what we want. So, 28% of the freed blacks in New Orleans in 1860 were slave owners, some huge plantation owners, cane plantations. So, it's not that Thomas Jefferson was a bad guy because he owned slaves and all black people were against slavery. It was a matter of status and opportunity. Having the opportunity to own a slave, a black in the United States owned slaves at a much, much higher rate than white people did. I know it's a little bit of a skewed figure, but it just gives you an idea of what the feeling on slavery was and it was an accepted condition and legal. To start changing history now is ridiculous. Berkeley was also a slave owner. The Cherokee owned slaves and it looks like Sequoia himself may have been a slave owner. The tree was named after him. Let's not get into ridiculous semantics on that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara, sorry. Barbara Whitstock, followed by Isaac Hughes after Barbara.
I'd rather be home, but good evening. I'd just say briefly about my history. I went to the University of Virginia and I lived in Washington DC. I'm not going to say how I stand on this issue. You can guess. My research that I've done in order to speak to you comes from KQED and I put a paper on your table up there about Israel Jefferson, who was a slave of Jefferson, and he gives his memoirs, which I think are worthwhile reading because it gives a little bit of a different approach to this matter. I also feel like if you start doing name changes based on what has been given as a basis, then you put yourself in a very strange position, which is to the teacher say, "Well, I'm not going to teach the Declaration of Independence in my classroom. Look what the board did. It must be right not to teach it." You could be starting to lead a march on Washington to get there and change the Jefferson Memorial to some other name. Just think what I just said. It's ridiculous to take what is a standard for today and apply it on heroes and fathers of our country in the past. And I think you need to think very seriously about what you're doing and one of the things you need to promote is forgiveness. Thank you very much.
Isaac Hughes, followed by Jackson Hughes.
Hello, my name is Christina Carter. I am the mother of three. I have a daughter who attended Jefferson this past year and was a kindergartner. I don't have anything fancy or formal, you know, formal put together, but I do want to say that I do support the name change for Jefferson School, obviously because I am a descendant of slaves. I'm an African-American and so that's one reason, but also at this point I support the fact that the students, the parents have gone through the process of doing the vote, going through the vote. My daughter was very excited about it. Her teacher did a great job explaining to her all the name choices and Sequoia wasn't her choice, which she didn't tell me initially because she said it was a secret and she didn't have to tell and I told her she didn't have to. So, I think that the whole process that the students went through was a great learning experience for them and for the vote not to be honored and to go back later and say it was for nothing, what is that teaching our students? What is that teaching my daughter about the whole vote process? She was extremely excited and I was excited that she wouldn't tell me who she voted for. Eventually, like I said, she did, but I was excited that she was learning the whole process and how important her vote was to her and to see the process go through. And so, at this point, I really think it does need to be honored. I don't think it's so much an issue of what you personally feel about Jefferson because I think there's valid points either way. I mean, he was a president, he was our president and obviously, you know, all of our presidents we hold to esteem for one reason or another. So, I don't think it's just that. At this point, I really do think it's a matter of honoring the vote and the process that was allowed to go throughout the whole school year and what message is that going to send to students going back next year going, "We went through all of this. We did all of this talking about the voting and the democratic process and you guys did these great things and it meant nothing." So, that's pretty much where I stand on that.
Thank you. So, Jackson Hughes, followed by Marguerite Tally. Thank you. Adam Sanchez, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just would like to say there's an angst that we're feeling right now. I'm sorry. There's an unspoken angst that we're feeling right now as a nation and I think at a macro level, we really have nothing that we can address. So, that's caused a lot of dissension and a lot of community, I guess, outreach, be it good or bad. And I would just like to say Jefferson was probably a great man. Kennedy was probably a great man, but you can't take those people and put them into historical context of today. I'm sure, like I said previously, that if Jefferson was here himself, he'd probably say, you know, "Where's your, you know, where's your sense of gratitude for me? Look at all I've done for you." Well, I'd say thank you, Mr. President, but this is a school of learning and it's not about us in this room here. It's not about all you good folks. It's about our children. And being a school, as we learn and as we grow, we need to address issues and face the truth. And the truth is unfortunately that the man owned slaves and yeah, that may have been the condition of his time, but I think we need to set a good example for our children and that once we find out truth and once we teach them the right way, especially being a good folk of Berkeley, that we should look at things more progressive and accept the things as they are. Me, being a mixed heritage of Mexican-American and Native American, I definitely wouldn't want the school being named Custer. I couldn't imagine sending my child there and my next two there in the pipeline coming in in the following years. So, I can definitely feel the pain that our African-American brothers and sisters are feeling on this issue. And I would just like to say also as a very active PTA board member, for which I'm not speaking here tonight, but I definitely think that moving in this right direction and going forward in the process as best as we could have determined it, that we should honor the process and if we really want to honor Jefferson's legacy, then why not represent that in his Jefferson democracy and what we have done and we have best, you know, lived up to those challenges and met them and the vote is what the vote is. So, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Marguerite Tally Hughes, followed by Jackie Ko-Chopum. Excuse my pronunciation. Kevin Atkinson, thank you.
I've got a little prepared text. I've been writing on this for about two years now. One of the points that I think is really being missed here, people are very quick to run to documents, the Declaration of Independence, but I think one of the things that we miss is, and here's my prepared text, "When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them one with another." With those 24 words, he's kind of put our situation out there, right? This is a political band that is being dissolved. Thomas Jefferson would be proud that we voted, the name change people won and that's it. What would Tom say today? I think that we are truly at such a place, you know, in the course of our human events that, excuse me, I'm a little confused here. For the better part of two years, I've been conspicuously silent on the name change issue. I've preferred to focus on the achievement gap that exists between African-American and white students at Jefferson in particular, but throughout the district generally. And because of that, I've not kind of had my voice heard on this, but I absolutely believe that our example as adults, because we tell our children, "Your actions speak louder than words, any words that you make." And if we're going to hold the standard that these words were so great that this man's legacy is immutable and we're not going to remove it, then let's think that way when we talk about Mubiah Abu Jamal or Huey Newton. And I think that our thinking has really, really got to change. Number one, for me, the process has been decided. I have a little angst as well because I want to ask each of you, where were you when we tread this minefield bravely on both sides? Where were you guys? And now you guys get to make the last decision? I think that's patently unfair. I agree with what Superintendent Lawrence said when she met with our PTA, that yes, the academic achievement gap should be a number one priority. So, I would expect that both sides of this debate come together after this has been finally solved to work on that. Thank you.
I have a son who is in the, who'll be in the fourth grade at Jefferson in the fall and I'll tell you that personally, I really feel the same way as the last gentleman who spoke, that in the beginning of this process, which has been a long, long process for parents and for students and also for the staff, I really was more concerned and still am about the infrastructure within the school community and that's also, that specifically is talking about the achievement gap and maybe the community, the community isn't what I would hope it to be. But now, we have as a community gone through this process. We've voted and it feels like a slap in the face if this board reverses or decides against what we have already voted as a community voted to do. And there are definitely two strong sides of this issue. I don't know what I'm going to say to my son or to the rest of the African-American students there because it was, the name wasn't so important to me at one time, but it's been pushed in our faces and the children especially are taking all of this in and they understand the reason, at least the biggest reason that's out there about changing his name is because Jefferson was a slave owner and he had relations with one of his slaves and fathered children with her and, but she was still his slave. And so, I've had to explain these things to my son and how now, if the name doesn't get changed, how will he feel as an African-American student there? How will the community, if there are divisions, how will we ever get back or build it and make it a stronger community at Jefferson because, I don't know how to finish with that, except to say that it just, for me personally, would be, okay, well, everything is as it always was. It's not important enough to change the name. The community has said we're going to, or the Jefferson School community has said we're going to change, we'd like to change the name and then the board says, "No, it's not important." So, what if he was a slave owner?
Zachary Runney Wolf.
Hi, my name is Zachary Runney Wolf. I'm a Native American leader of some 85,000 Native Americans here in the Bay Area. I'd like to correct some of the current misgivings. The longest surviving genocide is still going on and that's us, Native Americans, 512 years and in counting. It is, I feel, for my African-American brothers because even considering keeping Thomas Jefferson, 187 slave owners, I don't think there's 187 people in this room. And can you imagine all those people interned to your labor? I worked with Terry Duran on, and it was a very pleasurable experience on Rosa Parks, on the process, going into the school, teaching, you know, teaching why we were changing Columbus School to Rosa Parks. And it was a pleasurable experience, you know? And I feel for the children right now because it feels like you're going in and I'm not a big fan of Christmas, but it feels like you're going in and stealing their presents the day before. And I urge you, this is, I mean, you know, you're just, it seems like monkey see, monkey do with the Bush administration. Here we are, you know, with the voter machines, basically going to snatch away a certain defeat with the president and here it is, you know, the kids voted on it. Please, please stand by that and honor the children. Sometimes they act better than the adults.
And excuse my pronunciation, Pam Hacker-Clark, followed by Paul Wooten. Pam?
I see my client is Jan Goodman. Hi, I'm Jan Goodman, currently employed in a Berkeley Unified School District in the Bits and Par program, but the former principal of Jefferson Elementary School, whose name I hope will change. One of the things that I did after I left Jefferson was go to King and teach American history. And though I knew there were many injustices that happened in American history, it wasn't until I really looked at it that I saw the enormity of the injustice that was, that occurred to oppressed groups in America in the interest of prosper, having our country prosper. Thomas Jefferson, I'm not going to play dispute history facts that were presented before because there are few facts about him that to me make the difference about whether we should support a school in his name or not. One is that he owned almost 200 human beings that were uprooted from their homelands and brought to the United States for the sole purpose of forced labor. Then, one of the human beings that he owned was 14 years old. He raped that human being and fathered five children by that human being. And though those children were freed when he died, the woman that he raped was still enslaved. This to me is unconscionable. This to me invalidates any achievements he may have done, but let's take a couple of achievements. Well, he wrote, he supposedly wrote the Declaration of Independence, which says, "All men are created equal and they are endowed by the Creator with certain inalienable rights." And among those rights are- rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." He writes these words. Then he goes home to Monticello, which was built on the backs of enslaved Africans, maybe has sexual relationships with one of his slaves, and maybe fathers another child, which then will provide more free labor for his land. And then he goes back and writes some more words. At the same time, women aren't voting. Women aren't included in his Declaration of Independence. African-American people aren't included in his Declaration of Independence. Nobody poor was included. So, yeah, he was a man of his times in that he... the people of his times that made the laws were affluent, white men. Now, not all of those affluent, white men from the South owned enslaved people. Many of them didn't. Many of the white Southerners, affluent men, were abolitionists. Many of them openly fought against enslavement. Many... there was a man who moved to Illinois so that he would not have to have enslaved people. But the whole country was... all the laws that were put in place during the time that Thomas Jefferson was president and before, as he was an advocate of the Constitution and one of the key writers, all of those laws maintained enslavement for another 65 years after the Constitution was passed. One of those laws was the Three-Fifths Compromise. And that compromise, they were trying to figure out, well, who should vote in this? And how many votes should each slave... how many votes should each state have? And the Southern states wanted to count all the enslaved people as voters, as representatives.
If you could finish up in a couple sentences, that would be great.
Couple sentences, okay. Well, in that case, I'm going to get to the last part. I teach history, and one reason that I teach history, my students always say, "Why should we bother to learn it?" One thing I say is, "To avoid the mistakes of the past, avoid repeating them. To keep the name of Thomas Jefferson is not only to repeat the mistakes of the past, but to honor them." Is that what you want to teach the children?
Thank you. Paul Wooton.
My name is Paul Wooton, and it just occurs to me in this discussion that if whether or not a person keeps or has kept slaves is the deciding factor between whether a person is good or bad at this point in time, there's a lot of people... it opens up a lot of issues. And, you know, we have a Washington school. Washington kept a lot of slaves. Is that next? And George Berkeley kept slaves. And is Berkeley going to change its name? Berkeley High?
Sure.
And, well, regarding overturning votes, it happens kind of routinely in California. The courts routinely overturn the will of the people pretty much every election cycle. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Eri, I should know this. Sorry. Followed by Carrie Adams.
Good evening. I was hoping I'd never have to be up here again, but anyway, first thing I'd like to say is, I am not a racist, despite what it says in the newspaper, that if you vote for this or vote against this, you will be a racist. I am not a racist. And I also want to say, the man who mentioned the Japanese-American, I happen to be Japanese-American. I wouldn't mind going to a school named Earl Warren, because he was... the school was named after Earl Warren because of the good things he did, not the bad things he did. You know, if we go back and say, "Well, this person did something bad, and this person did something bad, so, you know, we got to do this." And, you know, this whole thing about changing history, you know, it's a very strong issue. But nonetheless, you know, facts have been raised in the newspaper, facts have been raised supposedly at school. People stood here and said facts. Well, you know, there's contradictions to each of all these facts, whether George Washington owned slaves or he didn't own slaves. One of the teachers wrote that he didn't own slaves. Other people have said he did own slaves. I'm no historian. I don't know these things, you know? One of the things that really irks me is this woman who just stood up, and it was also posted in an email that was sent to my house, that Thomas Jefferson raped one of his slaves. Now, I'm certainly no historian. I don't know whether he did or not. I mean, maybe there's proof. Maybe he was convicted. I don't know. You know, maybe he says there. But it seems hard to believe that 200 years ago, 200 years later, 100 and whatever years later, we can sit there and say that he definitely... he raped a 14-year-old woman. I mean, if he did, he should have been tried for that. But, you know, in those days, it might have been legal. You know, as I said, I'm not a historian. Anyway, you know, you are here to make a decision that's very complicated, because it's... you're the judge and the jury. I mean, you are the court system, as this gentleman said, to rule whether or not we go one way or the other. And it doesn't matter which way you go. And I'm no fan of Jefferson's name. It doesn't really make a difference to me. But regardless of which way you go, there's going to be blood in the streets. There is going to be bad feelings. You know, it doesn't really matter. All this stuff is, "Oh, we're going to get together and we're going to move ahead." Well, you know, we'll only move ahead because human memory is short, and we'll forget. But people are going to be pissed, you know, no matter how it turns out. And I think that's unfortunate. And I think that rather than going to a name change, perhaps we should have brought up this issue and used it as a teaching device, rather than as a divisive device, which is what it's become. Let's see. So, as you can tell, the majority of the crowd in here is for you to vote for the new name. Well, I think part of the reason is, is because most of the people who didn't think it was such a great idea have kept silent because they didn't want to be berated by their other fellow parents and students, which is what is a big thing. Yes, you stated in the Daily Planet that you thought that the...
Finish up with just a couple seconds.
Okay. The process was democratic, but I'll tell you, it was democratic under sort of the guns, and, you know, a lot of people didn't say what they wanted to say because they didn't want to get in trouble or they didn't want to cause distress.
Thank you. Carrie Adams, followed by Michael Lee Clark.
I was also hoping never to have to be in this podium again, but like some other people here in this room this evening, I've kept very quiet about my feelings. And I realized recently why that is. And it's because that I felt intimidated. I'm not for the name change. And the reason... reasons aside, there's many reasons for, against. But I guess what I have issue with is the way the process has gone on. We talk about the process, the process, the process, and that it was adhered to. I feel personally that the process has been a disaster. I think it has been misconstrued, misunderstood, not well explained. There's been a lot of vague things out there. It's been a mystery. And all of a sudden, things just... they were proceeding ahead, and this was happening, and that was happening. And as I started to feel more and more strongly about my side of it, I started to feel more and more, almost like pressure, that there's like being held emotional hostage, that if you do not agree with this, you can feel the way you feel and still respect my feelings, wherever that came from, okay? So it's very true, and I'm not the only one who is in this room or is part of this community at Jefferson that feels this way. I also do not consider myself to be a racist. I think and abhor the fact, the idea of slavery. I also think that the very fact that we are all able to stand in here this evening and say what we believe and undergo this process has its roots, its very roots and beginnings in the ideas of Charles Thomas Jefferson. And I don't really see that there's a problem with acknowledging his contributions. Everybody, every human being on this planet is, has, been, and will be flawed. You know, anybody who can stand up here and look back 200 years into the past and pass judgment and... I don't know. It's like the armchair quarterback. I'm with this... the lady that said, "Where is compassion? Where is forgiveness? When do we stop thrashing an issue? When do we move on? When do we..." This has been a divisive process. It has done nothing, in my opinion, to grow this community. It has pulled what I thought was something that was together apart. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Lee Clark, followed by Bruce Poropat.
Good evening, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. I think the process is working to the degree that, in fact, as a community member, my name is Michael Lee Clark. I've lived in Berkeley for 23 years. I don't have any children in the school system, but I do think the name change affects me and my community. And actually, I had something I wanted to say. It was all written on a card, but now I kind of want to throw it all away. I mean, I've been very, very moved by all the eloquent discussions that I've heard this evening. And it just kind of pains me deep inside that we have this now, you know? I have friends. I got neighbors out there. I got colleagues on the board. And so I take a stand, though. What is it that I want to do about this name change? And I ask myself the question is, do we want to stand and condemn this gentleman into perpetuity for something that he did do 200 years ago? And I'm not prepared to do that, and I'm hoping that Berkeley won't make that statement to the rest of the school systems in the United States. I'm trying to find, where's the compromise? I read two really outstanding commentaries in the Berkeley Daily Planet this week. I hope you all did. One of them was written by Rob Browning on June 14th, and I hope he'll have a chance to talk today. And another one, I'm sure, is from a gentleman who had to use a pseudonym because he couldn't stand up and say what he really wanted to say. But anyway, I mean, there was a really enlightened recommendation, is why not vote to make the school Hemmings Jefferson Elementary School? And that's a very enlightened kind of proposal, that where this whole discussion can continue and it doesn't die out. I mean, do we bury Jefferson because we changed the name of a school? I don't think so. And is it okay that I may be able to cede my... the rest of my time to somebody else?
Yep.
One minute. Rob Browning? Do you want to take it?
I'd like three minutes.
All right. I'm going to take the rest of my 45 seconds. I hope Rob Browning does get to say. But I think the only thing that I want to wrap it up is, if there were three people in American history that I could have a dinner with, they would be Thomas Jefferson, they would be Abraham Lincoln, and they would be William Jefferson Clinton. And I think none of those people were perfect, but they've all made tremendous impacts on society. And I think it would hurt me deeply and our community if we do do this name change. And I'm very sympathetic. I hurt for all the people who are so emotionally involved in that discussion. So thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Bruce Poropat, followed by Maggie Riddle.
Hi. The first point I'd like to make is that if everyone who is currently a student at Jefferson and works there and has a child there and perhaps even lives in the surrounding community, if they all voted 100% to change the name, they're still only part... they're having an experience with Jefferson which is common to people who have attended that school or had children there from the inception of the school or worked there since the inception of the school and will go there in the future. So if you take that larger group into account, the current people who voted are not even a quorum, let alone a majority. The second is slavery has... it's only been in the last couple of hundred years that slavery's been looked at as being as bad as we know it to be today. Throughout history, people have spoken against slavery, but it's only, you know, it was very slow for it to really be just revealed for what it was. Jefferson himself, who was a little hypocritical about it, spoke about... spoke against slavery. He was a very strange person. I think anybody who was going to vote one way or the other before they decide, they should read a book called American Sphinx, which is a great biography of Jefferson, and it just shows how great he was and how awful he was, you know? But when it all comes down to it, we don't celebrate people. We don't name things after people to celebrate them. We don't name schools after presidents or figures or to celebrate them as who they... for who they were as an individual, or certainly not for being perfect. We name buildings and schools after people as a way of recognizing their role in our history. And Jefferson, I mean, there's no one more part of American history than Jefferson and his role in, you know, he... it doesn't excuse him, but he inherited a bunch of slaves, who, by the way, weren't from Africa. They were born here. Somebody was saying they were... he was importing slaves. He didn't import any slaves. The, you know, none of this makes it better, the fact that he thought of himself as being a wonderful owner was probably not much comfort to the people who he owned. But, you know, we need to preserve our history and our tradition, good and bad. You know, we need to just acknowledge who we are as a people and not try to bury it by throwing away names of, you know, trying to bury the heroes of our past because they're imperfect. If we only name things after perfect people, we won't have anything named after people. Thank you.
Maggie Riddle, followed by Miriam Abrams.
I'm going to cede half my time, and I'm just going to make a brief statement. I want to specifically address the discussion about intimidation. And I want to say that I am for the name change to Sequoia, and that I felt greatly intimidated as a member of the now-Jefferson school staff to be able to honestly state my feelings and position on this name change. I want you to know that because that fear was echoed in these chambers when I was called an emotional terrorist for my position. That fear was echoed when some members of the Jefferson community, whether in the school community, parents, staff, alumni, would no longer speak with me because I had a position to change the name of the school to Sequoia. I also felt intimidated when we received threatening emails and veiled threats because I supported the name of the school change to be Sequoia. So I want you to know clearly that there has been intimidation and that it's always difficult to step out and speak your mind, no matter what. And that for me, for me, even when I've heard, even in the room tonight and at the last school board meeting, teachers such as myself being called dishonest and being accused of being biased with our students and a number of other accusations, I decided that no matter what, I had to speak my truth. And that is that I want our school name to change so that I can step on a different side of history, so that I can support our African-American community who is strongly telling you their beliefs. And I want you to know that of anybody who has had to bear emotional terrorism and intimidation, it is our African-American and Native American community. And that that is where we have to start worrying about what intimidation looks like for our schools and our students. And I am proud to stand on that side, no matter who speaks to me and no matter what names I am called. Thank you.
I'm wondering if some of these intimidated people have received hate mail, because I have. I wonder if some of these intimidated people Google themselves and find that they are called idiots, uneducated, unpatriotic. So it does take bravery to speak your mind. I know many people on the board and in the community may feel that the members of the name change committee are troublemakers. In his famous letter from Birmingham Jail, Martin Luther King Jr. responded to accusations from the community of white clergymen that he made trouble in the segregated South. He said, "I have come almost to the regrettable conclusion that the Negro's greatest stumbling block in his stride toward freedom is not the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate who is more devoted to order than justice, who paternalistically believes that he can set the timetable for another man's freedom." This is the first city to voluntarily integrate its schools. You must act as the successors of that brave school board in 1968. You must be brave. You must make trouble. You must approve the vote of Sequoia. In Berkeley, we are not afraid of change. We are not afraid of progress. We are accustomed to leading the nation in matters of moral conscience and social justice. There is no reason for me or any other African-American to feel uncomfortable with the name of our school. These people, there's no reason for them to feel uncomfortable with Sequoia. There's a name that we can all feel comfortable with because I pay taxes and I share that school and that experience.
Thank you. Miriam Abrams, followed by Beverly Theil.
I'm a parent at Jefferson-Sequoia School, and I just want to echo what you just heard in terms of feeling intimidated. I was probably one of the most outspoken advocates for the name change as a white parent, and I had many parents that I was friendly with stop talking to me and would not really acknowledge me anymore. So the intimidation happened with parents quite a bit. And I also wanted to talk a little bit about the process, because that's been mentioned before. We followed the process, the distrust... We followed the process, the district process, in good faith. This process started over two years ago. We collected signatures from 40% of the staff and 32% of the parents. We were asked at that time not to collect signatures from students by the principal. We followed that. We were very interested in education. A packet of information was put together at that time, which I had, and I offered to anybody that I asked to sign the petition. Some people took it, some people didn't. After the petition was accepted, we put out statements on the PTA E-tree that was approved by the person who was in charge of that. And we heard from parents saying that was inappropriate, we shouldn't do that, so we stopped. But that was our attempt to try to have some education. We asked the principal in the fall to put together a committee to get the name change going. There were several issues that needed to be resolved, one of which was should the students vote? Several parents did not want the students to vote. Superintendent Lawrence came to the PTA meeting and said the students did need to sign petitions. We followed that. They did sign the petition. There were other things that were questionable in the policy. For instance, number five says the site administrator will engage the school community in a democratic process to select a new name, not choose between an old name and the new name. We felt it meant that Jefferson should not be in the ballot. The school board disagreed with us. We went with that. It says that it has to be a majority of the population categories, which could mean the three together. The school board and the superintendent interpreted it as each of the three, students, staff, and parents. So, there was numbers of things that made it more difficult to change the name, and we went with it. We went through that process. Finally, last fall, the principal put together a committee that consisted of two people against the name change, two people for the name change, a staff member, a school site member, the principal herself. Those people worked together quite a bit despite disagreements. They very, very carefully went over the process and developed a process that they all agreed with was fair. And part of that process was put together on educational forum. We had been doing quite a bit of education informally during that time. Those of us in favor of the name change decided to stay within the process of that formal committee because whenever we tried to do something outside, we were dinged for that. The forum said that those of us in favor of the name change got 15 minutes and those against the name change got 15 minutes. The people against the name change chose a Cal historian. That was their own choice. I think virtually everybody who was at that forum, and I think some people here tonight weren't there, felt that they were very fairly listened to. I know two of you were there that night.
If you could finish up, please.
I'm going to finish up. And that they were really heard. People spoke up against the name change and for the name change. We pressed to have a professional facilitator so that we could have a fair process. So, the process has been fair. The students have voted. What you're going to do if you vote against the name change is going to sow, divide our school. A majority of everybody have said, "We want the name to change. We cannot unite behind Jefferson anymore." Thank you.
Okay. Beverly Steele.
You know, sitting here listening to all this, I'm just amazed at some of the comments. I'm actually, I'm Patricia Smith. I am for the name change. Intimidation has been the founding core of this country. We talk about honoring someone who had slaves and many of our founding, so-called founding fathers, who were so opposed to people of other races, yet we don't even honor the first and original Americans in this country. We have no, they have, you know, they have had no voice in this country whatsoever. We talk about intimidation in our school. I have felt, many times, I have not felt welcomed at Jefferson School. I have heard comments about African-American students, even from some teachers. I think it's time that we stop embracing people that clearly owned slaves, and it is wrong for us to believe that African-Americans had that much power that they owned slaves in this country. So, that, I mean, all these untruths, you know, I'm just amazed at that, how we put that out here. I think it is time that we believe that we need to embrace everyone, everyone, not just some people in this country. And I am for that, and I want the children to be heard, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And if everybody could please be respectful while people are talking.
Good evening. First of all, I've been trying to follow this as closely as I can for quite some time. And I don't remember anyone suggesting that Anthony Johnson should have a school name after him as a black slaveholder. So, that aside, I grew up with a strong cultural value, and I think it's one that's shared among most black people, which is expressed in, "When you know better, you do better." And that's very quickly followed by, "Don't do better, do right." All right? There is no argument that Thomas Jefferson was a brilliant man of his times. However, until the end, unlike other slaveholding men of status and stature, Thomas Jefferson could not find it within himself to do right. He had a chance. He could not find it in himself to do right till the end. Naming an institution, a building, or an award is about more than just the individual who's noted. This is about sowing a cultural conscience. I am not at all sure how we continue to try to reconcile this beauty and the beast phenomenon of Jefferson, or in fact, why we should try. Bowing to the obvious truths of human frailty, I am sure that we, in fact, we can find some other legacy to hold up that will more closely set the example of the best that we can all hope to be. We can do better. We can do right.
Since we started a little late, we have time for three more cards right now. Then, we're going to close the public hearing. Then, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to go into our regular...
She just said she can't do it.
Yeah. A regular board meeting. Anybody in this audience is welcome to put a card in for our regular board meeting. You'll need to put another card in. The last three names is Michael Berrylow, Victoria Eisen, and Rob Browning.
I'm ceding my time to the ready sample.
Thank you.
Hello, once again, I'm a Jefferson parent of two... Hello, once again, I'm a Jefferson parent of two children. I prepared some text. Okay. Signs from Earth. Carbon dioxide levels rise, oceans warm, glaciers melt, sea levels rise, sea ice thins, wildfires increase, ice shelves collapse, droughts linger, spring arrives early, autumn comes later. These are the first lines of a National Geographic's historic September 2004 issue on global warming. This issue was embraced and used by U.S. senators, Republican and Democrat, to teach other U.S. senators about this enormous threat to current and future generations. I believe that when the students chose Sequoia for their school's new name, they gave us an opportunity to unite in developing a curriculum involving environmentalism. Global warming is probably the biggest threat to all of our children's lives. As a coordinator of the PTA after-school program at Jefferson, we are already set to develop such programs. By January, if not September, we will offer a class for at least 40 students focused on alternative fuel sources, solar energy. The PTA supports this class monetarily, and two current teachers will teach it. We hope that fun events such as Solar Car Rally may be added. A student selected the name, and all sects of the school community chose it. Sequoia is one of the tallest and oldest, tallest, 350 feet and oldest over 2,000 years, living species in the world. I believe an environmental program supporting such a natural monument is necessary. The parents of our student body are leaders in the environmental movement. Teachers have already begun to offer lessons on various aspects of the environment. In kindergarten, my child made this wonderful representation of Muir Woods ecosystem right here. After visiting on a field trip, after visiting on a field trip, other students have learned about watersheds in the area and how their daily choices impact their survival. Give us a chance to teach future generations how they can reclaim their right to a healthy and varied environment. Please support democracy and approve Sequoia. Thank you.
I'm Victoria Eisen. I have two children at Jefferson School, and I also have prepared notes because three minutes isn't very much time to cover two years of process. In my three minutes, I'm going to talk about three time periods, not historic in terms of hundreds of years, but three distinct periods in the process of considering whether or not to rename the school. The first period was at the time that the name change was first proposed, about two years ago. And for those of you, based on your respect for Thomas Jefferson and all he accomplished, that are having a hard time, difficult time supporting the renaming of Jefferson School, I want to say that I understand where you were coming from, and I did not support the name change for reasons you already know, his greatness as a leader, his writing of documents on which our democracy is based, which seem particularly important now when our country seems to be forgetting some of these concepts. And finally, and ironically, were it not for him, there might not be a school as diverse and wonderful as Jefferson School. But the second period, which was the longest period, was between our school's decision to change the name and on our vote whether or not to do so, was a time of education and dialogue and the proposal of the alternative names. Those of us who are here tonight from Jefferson School, as well as members of the community who have followed the process by reading the paper or talking with those involved, have had the benefit of two years of listening and discussing the issue in all of its varied and complex dimensions. My family during that time had the opportunity to travel to Washington, D.C. last summer and made a point to visit Montelmo and the University of Virginia. During this period, many of us have read a great deal about Thomas Jefferson from a number of perspectives. And I want to say that this issue is not just important to one teacher, but to many families, black and white, gay and straight, Jewish and Gentile, to many who or whose ancestors have felt discrimination or worse. By the end of that period, that second period, the school's final vote, I realized what a slap in the face it would be after having listened and learned for over a year to choose to keep the name Jefferson. It is very difficult for me to imagine truly understanding all that we have learned without the benefit of those discussions over time. I know you've all had a crash course in the last few weeks, but it's just not the same. The third period we're in right now, the school community has come together behind a decision or a recommendation, as some consider it. We have come together not out of fear or threats or any other rumors that are being spread, but rather, we have come together out of respect for the feelings of fellow Jefferson families and others. I urge you to listen to your fellow board members who feel that the board's role is to make sure we follow the district's process, whether that's a good process or not, and came up with an acceptable name, not to judge the adequacy of the board's policy or to judge our conclusions. As I said earlier, how can five people who did not endure the entire process do anything more? I urge you to let us put all this behind us and return to what we send our children to Berkeley Public Schools to do, to learn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rob Browning. In deciding the question of an appropriate name for Jefferson School, the primary consideration, of course, must be the effect of that decision on our children's education. What would they gain from a name change? What would they lose? And what does it say to our children to base that decision on the process that has taken place? Consider the gains and the losses of making a change. Unlike the changes to Rosa Parks, Malcolm X, and Martin Luther King, the salient feature of this proposed change would not be the endorsement of important, underrepresented values, but the pointed rejection of the name Jefferson. I know you've heard from many who feel, as I do, that Jefferson, even with his undeniable flaws, so profoundly represents and was responsible for many of the finest features of our country, that the losses would far outweigh the gains. As to the process, it clearly represents much effort and good intentions on the parts of these good people who've spoken tonight. And I don't question the positive motives of these people, but I'm sorry to say, from my perspective, by any standard of fairness, this process has been a failure before tonight's brief one-hour public hearing on this subject. This decision, with obvious interest to the entire Berkeley community, has been deliberated exclusively by a tiny minority of our community. This is not democracy. What was apparently the only informational meeting on this complex issue, a meeting that I attended, was held less than a week before this exclusive group was asked to make its decision. This is not democracy. At that meeting, the presentation of the alternatives was starkly unbalanced, with the case for retaining the name Jefferson remaining essentially unmade. This is not democracy. It does no credit and offers our children a pretty lame model of democracy to base an important decision on such a flawed process. Where do we go from here? The issues raised in this discussion are very, very important issues. Staying focused on the best interests of our children, I think it's clear that all the energy put into removing the name of the school might so much better go toward developing a curriculum that addresses those important issues. What is the legacy of slavery? Why did Jefferson, a brilliant and good-hearted man who clearly abominated slavery, as he stated on many occasions, why did he have such difficulty acting effectively to end it?
If you could finish up a couple sentences, please.
Yeah, thanks. Such a curriculum, based on these challenging notions, would, much more than any name change, address real educational needs, bringing children to a fuller understanding of their common history, of human nature, of themselves, rather than making a largely cosmetic alteration and basing it on a flawed process? I urge you to take the substantive and constructive step of developing such a curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
I'm moved.
Ruth By Rivera.
Second.
Second, Maslowski, student director vote to close the public hearing. I abstain. The rest of the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose abstentions? We're going to close the hearing and take a five-minute recess. We're going to return to our regular board meeting. If you want to talk during regular public comments about anything, including this issue, please submit another card. Thank you.
We discuss the public complaints of land and public complaints.